On this special meeting of the Board of Virtualization of Oklahoma County Border. Today is Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, three is nine thirty A M. And we have a full house, Mr. Brett Towne, Mr. Reese Sellers, and I'm L R Thompson. And we, oh, um, notice that this meeting was properly hosted on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. We only have four items on the agenda today. Uh, item one is B O E number one fifty, Tabor, uh, Oklahoma City LLC. And you've appeared in front of us before. All right, but for if, it's another person who may not have. Um, we're gonna let you go first, we'll hear from the assessor, and then we'll give you the last word. And this is an appellate review of the assessor. And any information that you gave them during your informal, you can give to us. If you've got new information, you can present it, we won't consider it unless the, um, the assessor says it's okay for us to consider it. And you know, since you've appeared in front of us before, we are not interested in the tax liability or the taxable value. We're here to determine what the fair market, uh, value is of the property. At this moment, it is our intent to have tomorrow as our decision day. However, I think the commission is gonna need to figure out whether to apply under, when that's not. And the parade tomorrow, building may close down. And if it does, we'll decide later whether to meet Thursday or Friday for our decision day, and then you'll get notified by mail.
You're sure.
Okay, so this is, property is at forty-nine hundred South Senior Road, account number R one five four twenty-four three. This is four zeros, one, two, no, three, three zeros, three thousand. This is B O E number one fifty, this is the neighborhood Walmart, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the assessor began at five million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Lowered its price to, or its valuation to four million, eight hundred sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty. You, however, think that it's only worth three million, six hundred thousand based on the comps that you picked. So we'll hear from you first.
Okay, this is a neighborhood market. The only thing that's different about this neighborhood market and the other ones in Oklahoma County. And I, I do believe that we included the comps in our.
You did.
Our submission, okay, and I'm not gonna present anything today that I haven't given to the assessor's office. Uh, and so if you look at the equity comps.
Yes.
Which is this page, so the, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's eight neighborhood markets that are all here in Oklahoma County.
Right.
And they're all being assessed. Uh, most of them are under seventy bucks a foot. The average would be seventy-four dollars a foot. The only thing that's different with this one is that Walmart leases it, they don't own it.
Oh.
And so with appraisal in, in Oklahoma, you can't look to the tenant. Any value that's attributed to the lease itself is a tangible personal property. So if we're just assessing the real property itself, this should be assessed identically.
To the end.
To all the others, and it's, and it's, the argument is really as simple as that. And so if you look at the equity comps, seventy-four bucks a foot is the average right now of all of these other neighborhood markets. The value would come out to a little above three million dollars. We based our valuation on the sales comps that I included on the second page. And that's, that's where we got the value, three point six million. And so if, if it were three point six million, it would still be at the upper end of all of the other neighborhood markets in Oklahoma County. In fact, it would still be the second highest assessed neighborhood market in Oklahoma County, even at the value that I'm presenting. And so, uh, it, it really is as simple as that, there's no reason why this one should be so much higher than the other ones. If you look at an equitable assessment, um, our information is also backed up by the sales comps. So that's it.
So on your comps, there's a wide variation in age, this is the newest one, two thousand fifteen, I think, I think there's might be one that.
Yeah.
And I will say, uh, with the equity comps, you know, there are some newer ones. So there's one that was built in twenty thirteen.
Right.
And right now it's being assessed at ninety-two bucks a foot.
Right.
And so, you know, our, our value is in that ballpark. If it's above four million, then you get outside the ballpark.
Those comps had the Walmart in Owasso.
That was the asset.
It was on the sales.
Oh, it's sale.
There's one in Broken.
Yeah, I was looking, I told you.
And there was one in Owasso. But it doesn't, it doesn't tell us, it doesn't tell us whether it's a Walmart market, it just says a commercial retail.
Um, I've seen one in Texas.
Yeah.
How did they happen not to buy this one, but, uh, this is, uh, this is, this is Oklahoma City? So it's not like Bethany War Acres or Seven. Why, how'd they happen to lease this one?
Walmart has a few properties, um, throughout the country that they lease instead of build and own.
Right.
And I think that, you know, I don't know the reason why, if I had to speculate, I would just say that they wanted to open a location in a certain area. And there was a building, I think that they choose a mix. Uh, it's a very small mix as far as things that they lease versus things that they don't. And so, uh, you know, it shouldn't matter as far as if you're just valuing the real property itself. You know, the tenant shouldn't matter, it's the building, it's the land. I'm sure that you've had many folks over the years say bricks and sticks whenever they come in and argue this, but, um, but, you know, I try not to use that, but the theory is correct.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Morning, um, so this is one of several of these Walmart neighborhood markets around, and I'm trying to think. We had some court cases that came about, uh, what, a few years ago involving several of these or just Walmarts? I can't recall which ones they are.
You know, Steve, that's a good question. I think there might have been one neighborhood market, but most of the ones that, that we have litigation on were Sam's and Supercenters.
Okay. So I, I couldn't remember if any of those were included in, in that, uh, in that group of, of appeals and court cases. Uh, I, only thing I really have on this is that I, as far as the, the comps, the comps go, some of those values are based on, on older cost values. The, uh, the sales comps that were brought up, the only one that a year of build is similar was the one that was in two thousand, Lewisville, Texas. And several of these are larger than the, than the subject, but there are, uh, a, a couple that are, uh, smaller. But what we did is there apparently was a, uh, a building permit on this, and so we had done an increase on, on renovation and remodel, but in redoing it with, with, uh, Mr. Dobson, we pulled that back and just put it back to last year's value. We did, although we had noticed that this one had a sale back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And we did agree that it was a triple net lease type situation, and we treat those with a grain of salt because unless we can find out what the, you know, I mean, we'll try to back those out to a, a, an annual direct cap, uh, process or, or analysis. Uh, I did look up the sale information on it, it did confirm that it was a long-term triple net lease. But it does, it, it was a twenty-year absolute triple net lease, and it didn't say how much it was or anything like that, but, uh, how much the annual rent was. But again, we discounted that, uh, to quite a degree, but, you know, that's pretty much all I have.
So last year it was valued at four million, eighty-sixty.
Right.
So you did an increase, and did you, did you appeal last year?
No. But that wasn't our decision to appeal last year. I think, you know, just Walmart's got a big portfolio, and I can tell you, there, there was a changeover in the, the folks at Walmart that handle Oklahoma. And so that, that's why we appealed it this year.
Why do you feel that the Lewisville, Texas one was probably the most comparable? What was it about it that made it most comparable?
Are you, who, who asked me?
Yeah, Steve.
Oh, I didn't necessarily say it was the most comparable, I just said that it was the newest one that it had built. Uh, all the other ones were early nineties or going back into the seventies. The, the subject was built in twenty fifteen.
In terms of when it was built.
Where are we valuing here? If Walmart doesn't own this, where do we value it?
Well, we're still not bad at the real estate. No, we're not valuing the lease because we didn't have the lease or anything, but I would like to consider a, an income approach value on any property.
Right.
It's just tough with these because, you know, the, anytime that they do lease, it's, it's, A, it's rare, and B, it's typically to someone like a Walmart. These, this situation would be analogous to Walgreens or C V S.
Ah.
Where Walmart is gonna sign a twenty-year lease, there's probably an option that they could extend it. And so the owner of this property is buying that lease. He, of course, the real property is there, and that's obviously, you know, the big component, it's the component of why Walmart wants to occupy it. But he didn't pay that much for the property itself, he paid that much to get Walmart as the long-term tenant. Walmart's a triple A credit, so he knows that he's buying basically a corporate bond. And so the, the real estate.
They've been the only tenant in this.
Walmart would be the tenant.
But that, since, since it was built, Walmart's the only tenant.
Correct, yep.
Brett?
I just wanted to look at one more thing, yeah, okay, so the, the building was built in twenty fifteen, and there was the first sale for nine point eight. Something happened in twenty-one where there was a sale for, uh, just a little over eight million, and then a year later, or just a few months later, it sold for ten million five. But again, we didn't look at those and use them as, as sale comps or anything like that. We, we know that there's a triple net lease involved, so.
That, the, the existing, the four point eight that's on there, that you guys are asking is the same thing that they had for the last four years.
Right, yeah.
Do we know what that's, that, well, that's, I guess, based on?
Yeah, they, those are probably cost sales that are still being carried over, or cost values are being carried over from, uh, these years.
Okay, wanna add anything if I close this?
Uh, other than just, you know, we need to get this down to the other ones, you know, I think it needs to be at least four, uh, four million to align with the other neighborhood markets.
Okay. Well, I don't know when we're gonna meet.
Yeah, that's.
It's a wonderful dilemma we're in.
It is.
Good reason.
I'm glad we have the problem.
I'm glad you had it. Okay, so I'm gonna close B O E number one fifteen, go to the second item on the agenda, which is B O E number one five one. Is this pronounced Brise?
Yeah, Brise Southeast Congress.
Brise, well, I, my husband knows. Eighty-seven eleven, Paul Road, uh, number one, four, zero, eight, twenty-eight, forty-nine, seven. The assessor began his valuation at forty million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars. Dropped it to thirty-five million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand on the income method, and you're asking for a valuation of only twenty-five million, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-six. And I would add that, um, the assessor's market analysis is thirty-four million, one five six, eight two five. But their comp method, um, is thirty-six million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, six thirty-three. I guess the, um, the real fight here is whether the asset management fee is an operational expense or a financial expense. That's one of the fights, right?
Correct, I would say that and the income approach is, is probably the, the only disagreement. And then the sales, um, I've got some comments on the, the sales that the assessor used.
They think comp one controls, or you think comp one, which one?
I think comp one is the only one that's nearly identical.
Okay, so what was this value at last year?
We appealed it last year, um, I think, I think, uh, the value did come down last year, I think it was, it ended five percent what it is this year. So they brought it up five percent from last year.
Okay.
Um, or, so if you include the asset management fee, which, which we do believe, um, is something for an asset like this that should be included. Um, this is a property that, that does have some high-powered tenants, so you've got Amazon, Home Goods, um, I believe, uh, I don't know if it's Ryder, that's also a tenant. So you've got some really good long-term leases that are included. And when you have a, a building like this, an area that it is, it is something that is gonna be managed by a larger company. So, um, in order to deal with those tenants, to deal with the building itself, it is something that would be bound in something similar, so I do believe that it's something that should be included.
Is, is this like at two forty in, in similar?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what this is.
Well, it's, it's over by the.
Whole around it's by Crossroads, right?
Well, it's over by the.
Oh, I went the wrong direction.
I was probably, oh, it's two forty, I was at Crossroads.
Right.
I used to live over there many years ago.
You're right, yeah, yeah, my, my.
Eighty-seven, yeah, that's.
I'm getting, I'm getting my interstates mixed up.
Yeah, so what is the facility? And that's what I was trying to figure out, I hadn't been over there in a while. You said the tenants were Amazon and Home Goods and.
It was on.
It's a warehouse.
It's a warehouse.
It's a warehouse.
Yeah, yeah, it's a warehouse.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I went back.
And so within.
Construction.
There is, it's tough to drive through.
Yeah.
So if, if you look at the building itself and the construction, and then if you were to look at comparable one, which if, if it would be possible to pull it up, you can see that it's, and if you drive on thirty-five, uh, north of the I forty-four interchange, comparable one is to the west of thirty-five, and you can see.
Right.
It's smaller.
That's all that's up here on five thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
So why is it that you feel like because it's, it's similar and it's a lot smaller?
Maybe it's off the interstate.
Because it's closer?
Off, off the interstate, it's, it's got comparable access, it's, it's used in a similar manner, it's a warehouse. Um, it's tough with buildings as big as the subject to find a spot-on comparable. So, you know, wha- what you have to do is, is you go find something that's as close as you can get, which this would, and then make adjustments. And so I think that the, the disagreement with how the adjustments were made is really the issue that I have. Um, and I, I don't mean that, it's important for me to present on.
That one's newer, isn't it?
What the sale was.
It's, it's a little newer.
But it was a twenty nineteen sale, right?
Yeah.
Compared to twenty twenty and twenty-one on the other three comps.
Are, are you Raphael?
Yes.
It's good to meet you personally, and Raphael and I have had lots of conversations about this, this building, and so, uh, and I appreciate.
And you were mean to him, 'cause he's nice, that's, he's one of the nicest.
Was I mean to you? No, not at all.
Come on, man.
We've had, I know, I know, just looking up here that Hester Lemon sold the property for the build and everything. And Jay Lemon's a good friend of mine, so you don't know if he's involved in this sale, see.
I don't. You're not getting out of this.
Well, I.
But no, it's all right.
That, that I don't, this always.
I know, well, you're not sticking to.
And I don't know if, if you have the assessor's material, if you have Raphael's material. Um, but I just looked at his material of comp one, and then I went through and I looked at the adjustments that were made.
Yeah.
And so.
I had to.
I made my, my own adjustments, and so, which I, I believe are correct. Um, and so if you use the adjustments that I people, you should be made to the comparable, it brings the value down closer to twenty-six million. And so for a smaller property, and one thing that you have to do whenever you do your sales comparison approach, is you have to choose a unit that you can compare, comparative unit. And so you would pick price per square foot. So you're, you're trying to get everything down to price per square foot, because then you can compare the two, the subject with the comparable on a price per, per square foot basis. And so, um, for a smaller property, smaller properties sell for higher dollar amounts per square foot. So if you compare a smaller property to a larger property, you have to make an adjustment down for the square footage. And so, uh, one thing that, that Raphael did is he adjusted it up by twenty-six point six percent. And so that, that adjustment actually should have been the other direction, it should have gone down because it's a smaller property. So it's gonna sell for higher per square foot, so you have to adjust that down to compare it to a larger property. And I, I do have some material from.
But you, but you're necessarily, because it's smaller, it's gonna sell for a higher per square foot?
Always, yep.
Really?
Yeah.
Because?
Because you have, uh, it just, it's a, without saying it's a rule of thumb.
Okay.
It really is because, um, the utility of the building, people will pay more money for the location, you still have to clear the land, you still have to construct the building.
Right.
They sell for higher per square foot, and I think really it's just a unit of scale. So with, with a larger building, and, and you can even look at the Wal- the Walmarts are a good example. So a supercenter will be assessed at a much lower dollar per square foot than a neighborhood market. So I think most of the Walmart supercenters in Oklahoma County are probably assessed at fifty to fifty-five dollars a square foot. The neighborhood markets, which are essentially the same thing, they're just smaller. Usually in similar locations, they're just a smaller box. They're gonna be assessed at, at closer to, you know, eighty to ninety dollars a foot, you know, except for the one we just talked about, but, um, that, that's, that's a good way to look at the size difference. And so, and, and there's also information within the, uh, the real estate textbook that says this, and I did send this to Raphael. Um, and it is something that appraisers will do when they compare smaller.
Well, that was the one where we got the lesson. What am I, who, scoot on this? Yeah.
So if you do, if you make just that adjustment alone, it brings the dollar per square foot down closer to, you know, sixty-five bucks a foot.
And what, what was Raphael's per square?
Uh, per square foot, using that comp with the adjustments that it was on. One hundred and eight, one hundred and eight, yeah, one hundred and eight, sixty.
Oh, such a good difference. Okay, let's talk about the, the, uh, asset management fee, your position on the asset management.
Yep.
Tell me why you think it's different? Why, why you wanna consider it as an actual expense?
I think it's an operating expense, and I think, I think the property does have to be managed, and it's something that, that a buyer would take into consideration. If you bought it, they would have to manage it in a similar fashion, and, you know, it is expensive. It's expensive to manage a property like this. So, and, and if you look at it, you know, if you include that, it does line up with comparable one if the, the proper adjustment's made.
What, what, what was, what is the bottom line difference? Cause I tried to go across your chart on the management fee and figure out what effect it had on the bottom line, how you characterize.
It has, if you exclude.
Yes.
The, the asset management fee, it, it drops the value a lot.
Okay. Okay, let's hear from the assessor.
Okay, uh, we'll start with, uh, the comps and, uh, the issue with the price per square foot. Uh, Dobson, Mr. Dobson is actually correct about how if, uh, a smaller property will sell more per square foot.
Right.
But the total value will be less than a larger property, right?
Yes.
So this, uh, comparable sales adjustments is based on total value. It's not based on price per square foot. We do see, we, you do see a price per square foot at the bottom of those, of this information.
Yes.
No adjustments are made based on price per square foot, it's only based on total value. That's why you have the positive adjustment if there is a smaller comparable. Um, we did agree that comp one was the best. And, uh, the major contention was with the quality adjustment as well. Um, because they did have similar quality builds from what I could tell, so we did have it as a good, the comparable, while the subject was a good plus, uh, at a forty percent adjustment. If I knock that down to a twenty percent adjustment, because there might be a slight difference in quality, but not to that degree, then I get a value of, that was an error. Here it is. I get a value of thirty-eight million, eight ninety-eight, nine point four instead of the.
Thirty-five.
The, instead of the forty-three.
Forty.
The forty-three.
Okay.
So that was the sales. Um, as far as asset management goes, it is the opinion of the assessor's office that asset management fee should, uh, shouldn't be an allowable expense. It's a, it's a financial expense, it's not an operational expense, it's like debt service. So that's why I didn't include it as an allowable expense. Do you do any apartment?
Do you do any apartments?
I have done some.
Is that asset management fee, yes. Is it considered an expense in apartments?
Uh, they usually don't have asset management, uh, listed on apartments. It's property. It's a property measure. That is an allowable expense. I said it's part of, uh, the apartment's operations. You have an incredible copy, Mike.
I'm just looking at that myself. I was like, oh my God, really? Why?
There's a, there's a running joke. And it's, there's the, it's the Golden Girls. See, around there, there's Lanch.
Watched that the other night. When the game doesn't, I turned over.
It, it is classified as an operating expense within the financials. So, uh, that's, that's one thing I will note.
Well, I, I, I understand your argument that you can't run it without management. You're having a hard time distinguishing that from the.
Well, I can s- you know, I can see it as a, it's much more difficult to manage an apartment complex. So I can see that being in there, uh, with six tenants. How many tenants are in this property?
Four.
Four. Figure out, I'm trying to figure out what type of management it takes to manage four.
That you know are going to pay.
Your honor, probably you.
Long-term lease.
So, yeah, who was right. So Pepperidge Farm is one. Amazon is one, Living Spaces. I think I said that one good, Living Spaces. I don't know if there's what the difference in that is, but I know.
Living Spaces is hard, hard to describe.
See, there's people that try to spend money on those stuff.
No, it's around the corner from my house.
Most of those stuff is forty years old.
I haven't even been in there yet.
Okay. Well, you get the last word and I'm going to tell you that I'm trying to, I'm going to put in my mind the difference between managing that and managing apartment complexes to the characterization, whether it's allowable, allowable or not. I understand their rationale and then he brought up even a better question. You got four good tenants, long-term tenants. What, what are you saying? I mean, I mean, as opposed to an apartment complex, you, you just literally does not run without the manager.
Yeah, I would say that the, the big difference is that these big industrial type tenants are needy.
I know. Starting from state, they get a break from the state and then they get a break from the city. I'm like.
They are, they are needy. Uh, they're, they're constantly having to do stuff to the buildings to satisfy them. It's an expense. It's on their, that they do incur. It's on their statements. It's an operating expense that's classified on their financials.
I want you to respond to the fact that he's, his adjustments were, um, were, you remember how he said, why he said he made the adjustment up instead of down? He did the total valuation issue.
Well, but when you compare, you use a unit or comparative unit. And so that's why you have to bring it down to square foot. So when you compare buildings, cause that way you can multiply it by their square footage. So, and, and that's how, and I'm certainly not an appraiser. I don't hold myself out to be. But I've, I've, you know, read the, the material in the textbook. I've spoken to some appraisers, uh, that we've used. We used an appraiser on the Johnson-controlled building that's in, uh, Norman on Flood Road. And so I looked at both his appraisal and I looked at the appraisal that the Cleveland County Assessor used and they both did it that way. So they made downward adjustments for smaller buildings to get to the price per square foot. And then it's also in the, in the textbook. That's, that's how you do it.
You, you have a opinion on that, Teresa?
Not right now.
Okay. Can you break it? Okay. So I'm going to close, uh, BOE one five one, and go to I three on the agenda, BOE one five two. American Property Investors. This is the famous Sheridan Hotel. That was another ten foot.
Hey, Raphael.
So you're not doing that one? And then this is your three for this?
This is, well, actually.
Four.
This is your two for me.
For you, okay. And then your three for home. Okay, so, uh, this is property zero, one hundred thirteen, forty-eight, five. The assessor, um, for twenty-three and twenty-four has been consistent in valuing this property, twenty-nine million, five hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And you want us to value this at twenty-one million, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars. So this is the three hundred and ninety-six one hotel that we're all familiar with. So tell me how you arrived? Twenty-one million as opposed to twenty-nine, which is, I'm sorry, it was, it was the same value in twenty-four and twenty-three. It was thirty-five. So.
Do, do you have this in your material? I'm not certain that you do, but it is something that I did get from Steve. And so if you don't, I'll pass this out and I can explain it.
Thank you.
So this is another one that Steve and I have had many long conversations about. And, uh, there, there are some philosophical differences in, in how you approach the valuation of a hotel. And I, I think, I think for the hotel itself, for the rooms, you know, folks book, they stay there, it's essentially paying a rent for a night or however long they stay. There's an occupancy rate that's very similar to a vacancy rate when you're valuing apartments. And I don't necessarily think Steve and I have a disagreement about that part. It's what you do with their food and beverage, which is a business. So, yeah, and so I, I think that the best way to look at this is what would the hotel part where folks come and stay? What is the value of that? And their income statements break that out. So they have separate line items for the hotel revenue itself. And then they have separate line items for the food and beverage. I believe that, um, what Steve has done has included the food and beverage income and expenses within his income approach. In my opinion, I think they must be separate because you have spaces.
Separated or not considered. There's a difference between separating them out and not considering.
Well, I think that the food and beverage components should not be considered, but you have to assign a value to those spaces. Because they've got a, a restaurant, they've got a bar area that is essentially a restaurant, and then they've got a coffee shop. So there's three spaces that generate that food and beverage revenue.
Four, you can have meeting, meeting room spaces. Would that be considered part of the income? Food and beverage of banquets and some meeting rooms?
The, the meeting room areas would, would be closer to the hotel valuation component of it. Cause essentially people are renting them. So if you think about a, any, any restaurant, so we can pick one downtown, uh, mahogany. It's a little too high priced for me, but I know that a lot of folks do eat there. The value of that mahogany, that space, an appraiser would never go in and say, let me see your income statement on how much you make selling steaks and selling wine. That wouldn't be the way they value that space. The way they would value that space is say, if I bought it, how much could I lease it to mahogany for? It's, it's a rent. So in, in any restaurant, if you think about a Chili's or an Applebee's or, you know, Park Crew up on Northwest Expressway, if you own that building, your revenue as the owner would be the lease payment, the rental payment that the tenant pays you. And that's how you value the property. You wouldn't value it on how much money Park Crew makes. You'd value it on how much rent Park Crew pays to the owner. Does that make sense? So the, the only way that, we don't say the only way, the, the way that I think, the food and beverage should be treated with the hotel would be the spaces have square feet. So the Aria has thirteen hundred square feet, which is on the second page. The B twenty-three has fifteen hundred and ninety-four square feet, and then the brick room has eleven hundred and sixty square feet. So I went out and found rental comps for hotel-style properties that were advertised.
Then you backed that out.
I did. Well, I just valued it separately.
But you back it out of the total. And he's, you're saying he's, he didn't?
He is including the revenue and expenses from food and beverage, which are line items on the, uh, and I don't want to speak for you, Steve, but I, I, I think that's, I think that's correct. And if it's not.
But you don't want us.
I did not include that part because I said that's a business. So then, but you still have to assign a value to the spaces.
Yes.
And so I would say, what could those restaurant spaces, what could you lease those for? So would be thirty-five bucks a foot. That's the number that I chose. I think it's fairly conservative. And then I annualized it out to find net operating income. I did not deduct, deduct any expenses, thinking that there'll be triple net leases. Uh, and then I used a nine and a half cap and I came up with a value of one point five million dollars just for the spaces themselves.
And what did you do with it? Once you valued it, what did it?
Added it in it. So, and if you go to the front page, there is the, the rental income, the room income that I used. And then there's the other income, which would be meeting spaces, things like that. And then my gross income was twelve point six million. Expenses, not including the food and beverage. I, I removed that. Would be roughly ten million dollars. And then I, I came up with an NOI, uh, of two point five million dollars. And that's what I used to indicate the value and then subtracted the personal property. And then added in the restaurant space.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, Steve, we'll hear from you.
Okay, so I know we've mentioned in the past that most assessors follow the, uh, the documentation or, or the process that the ru- the Rushmore approach, evaluation on income for hotels is, is, uh, well-known. And so that's what we said, that's what we start with or work with for mo- uh, for these larger hotels. So I, I know I provided to everybody a copy of this hotel property issues that was from a, a conference in Boston here a couple of years ago. And if you'll go down a couple of pages, Jason, to like maybe the third page right there. We talk about how these properties work in the fact that most of them have large management companies that operate the whole bunch. And that that's one of the items that's included on the, uh, on the operating statement that was provided, is management fees. And I, I like this, uh, point down here. It says hotel staffs are employed by the hotel manager that provides numerous services, maintaining guest rooms, food and beverage services, and facility systems management repairs and replacements. So the owners of this thing, they have a property and they contract, you know, I think the operating, the management fees on this thing is three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars this year to run this. And then on top of that, they do pay royalty fees and stuff like that for the flag and all. I would just encourage you to please read through this because this basically follows what we follow. And so using the information that's provided between, uh, this, uh, this profit and loss statement, which was for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, uh, we follow along with, with the Rushmore approach is. I also have on this, it, it talks about the hotel management contract that's involved and all. Now, Jason, would you go to the Word document right there? This is the company that manages, uh, Crescent. I look at our hotels. If you, if we want to scroll through some of that, there's a picture of the Sheridan that shows that it is part of their management service. And if you go through there and you read through this document, it talks about what they do for these, uh, hotels and, and resorts and stuff like that. So it's our opinion that they're trying to double dip in this is that they're taking, they're saying that you, this company's being paid to handle all of it, but we want to take out more for the operations of it. But, I mean, it does kind of integrate together, but the fact is, is that the management company is the one that is taking care of this operation. At least that's, that's what we can tell based upon, uh, information that, that we found. Now, if you want to go back through there and look at the income analysis that I did for the property, I did provide the twenty twenty-four hearing and a twenty twenty-five hearing and how I worked through them. And there's, uh, a few things that I want to note on, on this document right here. Right here. This is twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four comp comparisons.
Yes.
If you look at, and, and if you look at twenty twenty-three total operating revenue, which is that first call, uh, first set rose down there, they went up from fifteen million nine to seventeen million one, basically, for total operating revenue.
And did that include the food and beverage?
No, that comes down on the ne- on the next, on the next section down here. Food and beverage, uh, came up four hundred thousand dollars from the previous year. In twenty-three, it was six million, four fifty-eight. And twenty-four, six million, eight twenty-four. If you go and you look at the, uh, total un- undistributed expenses, there were increases in the expenses, as one would expect. Went from four point eight, uh, four million, eight seventy-one last year to five million, one, uh, sixty-eight. But then when you drop down and look at the next line, it says gross operating profit. The gross operating profit increased from twenty twenty-three, the number was four million, six, to just under five million, one for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we spoke about management fees or slight increase in management fees, and I would agree with that because the property, uh, did, did better. Their income before non-operating income expenses, about five hundred thousand dollars difference. Uh, four million, two eighty-seven in twenty-three, four million, seven fifty-five. Uh, if you go and you look at the others, uh, other non-operating income and expenses, that number's actually down a little bit from a million, two thirty-four to a million, one forty. And even, there's a one, there's a, uh, a term that they use in hotel valuation. They, the acronym is EBITDA, which is earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and amortization. And that number came up, uh, from three million fifty-two to three million, six fifteen.
But the income, are you saying the increase in the income included the, the, the food and beverage?
Ju- yes, from last year to this year. And, and like I said, it's included in the operations of the hotel and it's managed by Crescent. Crescent Hotels and Resorts Management Company. So again, following the Rushmore approach, this is how it's done.
And so your response to his argument that you, you wouldn't, when you value mahogany, you don't look at their sales, you just.
Not, as far as I know, they don't have a management company that's running a, a restaurant like that. This is within the hotel operations. And it is part of it. And I don't know if you, I don't know if we have any of the Rushmore approach, uh, documentation other than, I, I would say is that this follows the Rushmore approach. And if you go through there and look at that, uh, you can see, uh, why they say that, that it, that it all works together. But the royalties, the management fees and everything are already being expensed out. And you can see that if you looked at my documentation on how I did this. I, I follow that, uh, format. Well, it's, it's based on this document right here.
Did you, did, last year, did, was this the issue? Did you, did, last year, did, was this the issue last year, what to do with food and beverage?
Not necessarily. We didn't, we didn't touch that, on that issue. That, the issue last year is what Steve is, is saying, and I, I guess, the difference between the Rushmore method and what it is, is not what I'm talking about, but I can talk about. And it's, it's more, what do you do with the intangible components of a hotel? If, a good example would be up on, uh, Northwest Expressway, there was a Marriott there for a long time, it was across from Baptist. And then, they took the Marriott name off of it, and then it became, I think, the Home City Hotel, I can't remember exactly what it was. But, the value dropped significantly, because they couldn't achieve the amount of, of daily rental rate, daily occupancy rate that they could support. And then the Marriott, uh, reservation system was pulled. So, when that happens, you know, now you've got, the real property itself is exposed and out there for everybody to see. And so, the, what Steve was talking about is how do you identify and extract the intangible components of these hotels? The Sheridan uses the Marriott reservation system. So, if it didn't have that, then what would happen to it? Well, it wouldn't achieve the amount of revenue that it does. It's a separate issue than what I'm talking about, but it is something that we would get into, and I do disagree that the Rushmore method is the correct way to, to value that. But I thought for simplicity's sake, I was trying to avoid that discussion, because it's not settled. And so, that's the, that's the type of thing that, you know, there's, there's two different sides of that. There's Mary O'Connor and David Lenhoff, who've gone up against Rushmore many times over the years. They've litigated many states across the country, and it's not sev- certainly not settled in Oklahoma. So, in order to at least avoid that issue, so my value's actually fairly conservative, if, if you want to include that issue, then we would do a separate evaluation of just the intangible components of the hotel. And that would be, what's the value of the Marriott reservation system? Um, what, what is the value of, of the brand itself? All that would have to be identified and extracted. I did not do that.
Chi- but, the, the, tell me the gist of why your valuation is so much lower, not only of what they say, but of what it was last year?
Because food and beverage. So, if, if you look at, at Steve's income approach, regardless of the Rushmore management fee and all that, he is including profit from the food and beverage. Just a straight line, he's got food and beverage up at the top, revenue of four point four million dollars. And then he's got food and beverage expenses, and roughly two point nine million. If you subtract those two numbers, then you get a net operating income of just food and beverage. That is included in his valuation, in his income approach, and I think that that is improper. So, there's, there's, there's two issues. I was trying to avoid this year issue, because it's complicated and folks just don't agree on it.
But he did that, and he did the same thing last year.
And I didn't agree with it. We, we came, you know, it's, we, we came to, you know, an agreement as far as for this year. My client didn't want to push it any further, but, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that, it's hard for, for us to come in and say why we didn't do it last year, why we didn't push it further, other than just they didn't want to do it.
Just Steve, the twenty-four value was twenty-nine five forty-seven, what was the twenty-three value?
Tw- thirty-five million, wait a minute.
Cause I think, I'm just trying to think back, and I know of year to year is, everything is different. But we were really concerned in two thousand twenty-three because of total revenue loss, occupancies were really down there for this particular property. So, we felt like in that case, it was, it deemed a pretty drastic reduction.
Right.
And then this, now we're seeing vacancies and profits up, even in that area.
Right.
In occupancy, so.
Um, I did want to make another point, is that, in my notes, I don't know if you read them or not, one of the things that I had come across was, uh, was an article talking about increased capitalization rates for hotels. And on my, uh, analysis between last year and this year, I actually did raise my capitalization rate a full point. And it still came up with a higher value than it was last year, taking all, everything into account. So, that was one thing. The other thing I did want to, uh, bring up is that, right across the street, cause this was brought up at some point in time, uh, we did a hearing on the Wyndham Grand, which is right across the street, and I think we currently have a value on that thing, which is very similar, I think, to the Sheridan, I think we're at, uh, seventy-three thousand six forty-two per room on, on this hotel right across the street. And I think we're sitting at, uh, seventy-seven thousand? Yeah, we're currently sitting at seventy-seven thousand, uh, on, on the subject.
We went down on that Wyndham, is that our call? Question.
I think this was, I think this was a hearing this year too. Uh, and so during the informal information that was provided, uh, we, we made an adjustment on that. But it's, it's very similar to, to the subject. Uh, and like I said, well, let me step back a second. I said that my twenty-five analysis put me at just under seventy-eight thousand dollars per room, but I think our actual value is pretty similar, uh, right now. Are we at seventy-four mil- uh, seventy-four thousand per room? Yeah, so, because we did not raise the value.
What do you think? Yeah, it's, it's.
A lot of documentation, too, that.
It's a, but it's still a top form, but to do that.
So, I can give you some numbers.
Okay.
And just within Steve's valuation. The net operating income is three million three hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred and sixty-four. Of that number, one million five hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred and seven is from food and beverage. So, it's a big chunk, so if you include that, you know, if you include that profit, it's going to drive the value up. But, the question is, should it be included? That's business, that's a business component, and it goes back to the way that I phrased it last, or my opening statements would be, you wouldn't value mahogany based on their profit, you'd value it based on what the building can lease for. So.
That could be one day is eight.
Big, that big document that you shared, maybe it was in our.
The?
Please.
On the program, no, that one I know, I've seen that one. Austin, these things that you kind of talked about, yeah.
That's right there.
Yeah, is that included? I mean, I know it's going to be hard to read, but is that included in our?
Yes.
Yeah, it looked, I had to turn it around.
I had to, I.
Right, I had to rotate it.
Yes, that's the way you do it. I, I think you have our copy that has my number.
Great. You got an opinion on the food and beverage?
I'll reserve.
Okay.
I need to look at it a little bit.
Okay.
Cause it has implications.
It does. Yeah, right there.
Cause I think.
In that line.
Be included.
We, okay.
We have it.
We have, we have. You get to laugh, what?
Uh, yeah, um, I don't think I need to say anything else, other than I did value those spaces, cause this is a real property valuation, so.
That's a big chunk, that almost knocks it in half.
It, it is, I, I think hotels in general are overvalued all across the city, um, for multiple reasons.
I think when I signed on for this, I didn't sign on to it like I was going to, but I had the school of hospitality. Okay.
Uh, but I do recognize that, that it's a complicated issue, and, and I appreciate Steve for, uh, putting the work into this, cause he, he definitely did that, so.
Yeah, we're never going to see you back again, it's.
Already.
Okay, well, I don't know when we're going to decide.
Okay.
Look, look, I mean, cause of the parade, but we'll have to give it up.
I was just going to find it, Boe is closed tomorrow.
But we're not deciding tomorrow.
Of the X, I stand this, here's your proposal.
Probably a good choice.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly, certainly.
So, we're all going to the parade tomorrow.
That's right. Yeah.
Right.
Jack Baumholtz.
What's that?
Jack Baumholtz.
Yeah, he's one of my good friends.
He's my cousin's, uh, Tim's my first cousin.
Yeah, I see Tim all the time in the elevator. Jack was with our firm for a long time, and then he left a couple of years ago. We still stay in touch, yeah, I'll tell him he said hi.
Okay, so you go take a nap. All right, so.
Did you read my mind?
I did, I did. Pretty close, uh, BOE one five two, we go to the last item on our agenda, number four, BOE number one five four. Uh, Brooks Wright, um, the issue here is home valuation freeze. And this is account number R two zero seven six ninety-one two eight zero. Okay, so I read your, your tax forms, and the issue is how to, how to, um, how to construct your, your income for purposes of whether or not you get the freeze. Okay, so who's who here?
I'm Brooks.
Okay.
I'm with the assessor office.
Are you twenty-one? Okay. Okay, all right, so, you've sat through this, so you understand, you get to go first and last. All right.
So, um, I didn't know much about this evaluation freeze, but I got a notice, I think, on the analysis. So, your income is under eighty-five thousand, you get a freeze, I'm a senior. Um, and the way I calculate my total income, total gross income, it, for last year twenty twenty-four, I'm less than eighty-five thousand.
Right.
Here's my twenty twenty-four.
We saw it, I, I read the whole thing.
And on page.
Can't believe you.
Our.
It makes your personal business, but that's what I said.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, well, I had to draw money out of my IRA, pay some costs, but, line nine says total income, total income is negative, that's less than eighty-five thousand.
It is gross.
That is gross, of all my things, and if you look on this form here, it says total gross household income. And it says add lines one through six L. I filled out every one of these forms, added them up, totaled, and it's negative, that's less than eighty-five thousand. So, I had some income, I had some losses, it's the total gross of everything, I'm less than eighty-five thousand.
So, you're saying for purposes, for tax purposes, the assessor has to accept what? The characterization on your ten forty?
Right, because it says income from partnerships, states things, or losses, that's line L. Well, the losses I have are from partnership, business partnerships, and they're included on the form that's on the line. It, it's pretty simple, it's, you know.
You had no tax liability for the amount of my assessor says is your gross income, is that your decision?
Yeah.
Yes.
And here's the form.
Yeah, we start it, cause I've, I read that, I can't believe I've seen somebody.
So, I hate to get in your business, but this is, kind of, we got to get in your business on this, uh, the losses. Can you tell me how those losses were generated? I mean, are they because we purchased, I mean, we concluded our expenses by purchasing things, or we just had?
I opened an Ace Hardware store in Westing, and getting started, start of year. You don't have any prior years business.
Sure.
Have costs to get started, and so that was where my losses came from. Okay.
Were they actual losses or accounting losses?
They're actual losses, things I had to pay for. That's why I took out the money out of my IRA, pay for those things.
So, the assessor is probably saying, when you took the money out, that was income.
Right.
And you're saying, yes, I took it out, but what I spent before was an expense, not counted as income.
Well, yeah, it would reduce me, it would be not, it would reduce me.
If you were providing me a spreadsheet, though, wouldn't those be assets that increased your, uh, increased your value?
Depends on how you value it, I mean, like, most businesses are valued at multiple earnings, so it would be an asset when it started making money, but, till it makes money, which I think will be in a couple of years. And, uh, but to qualify, it's the one year at a time, and so the year I'm looking at is twenty twenty-four. I'm probably looking at.
No, twenty-three, right?
Twenty-four is income, my twenty twenty-four tax return, yeah. That's what you looked at, was my twenty twenty-four tax return, the income last year is what I think qualifies me for the freeze.
The freeze would be prospective for, for twenty-five? That's why I'm getting confused.
I think so, that's what.
Well, yeah, it's based upon your twenty twenty-four income taxes.
Okay, okay, so let me hear from you.
Um, so I received.
What is your name?
Stephanie, sorry, I'm Stephanie with Oklahoma County.
No, that's, that's, that's child, and.
Oh, good. Um, okay, so I received Mr. Brooks' application on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five for the senior valuation freeze.
Okay.
Um, sorry.
We, we.
Oh, you have, okay.
Yes.
So, um, I received his application on February twenty-fifth. Uh, to qualify for the senior freeze, you do have to be sixty-five years or older, which he was. Um, and then you're, it's based upon your total gross household income. Uh, the income limit for this year for twenty-five cannot exceed more than eighty-nine thousand five hundred. Uh, if you look at the Oklahoma Constitution, it does state the gross household income from all sources cannot exceed the amount provided by HUD. And then according to the Oklahoma statute, the gross amount of income of every type regardless of the source, uh, whether income was taxable or non-taxable before any deductions, uh, for federal and state and tax purposes.
Yes, yeah, that's good.
Um, and so, um, after we reviewed the application, uh, he was over the qualifications. Um, if you see on his application, he listed, uh, he had a RA distribution of three hundred and ten thousand. So, that's why the assessor office do not.
Okay, we got a clash here of, of terms. The definition in the statute does not allow for you to consider your loss. It's just what you receive from whatever source. And so, you've looked at the term used on the document, the actual document that you filed, and you want it to control, not, not the language of the statute. The, as I see it, that's the, that is the issue.
Yeah, my rebuttal of that is, it's gross income, gross income. Yeah, I have some gross income, but I have losses that reduce my gross income. Here's my, here's my, here's the law for Oklahoma. My taxable income, my gross income is negative, so the way.
No, your taxable income is negative, right?
My gross income is negative. My gross income on Oklahoma is derived from the federal tax return. If you look on my federal tax return.
I, I.
Line nine, total income, that's my total gross income, it's negative.
But the statute.
Well, I'm going by the law of what you're taxed on, you're, you're taxed on your income. And the way the law states for federal and for Oklahoma, Oklahoma, my income is negative. And that's the taxable income that I pay taxes on, that's the definition of income.
Okay. Okay. Is the successor, you have any on our?
I mean, yeah, it's just based upon the total gross household income, not the net income.
It's not net income, this is gross. Says total income, it's total gross income on the tax return.
Do you have any questions to listen? Are you ready?
No, can you read this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we've now been informed. And we're not meeting tomorrow to decide. So you're just, you'll hear from us whenever, we'll either meet Thursday, Monday, so maybe next week before you hear from us.
Nothing's happening a year.
Okay.
It's a good thing, cause we might need that one too.
I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to, I'm just, it's hard to look at you, Miss.
Why appreciate that?
Nice to meet you.
It was nice to meet you.
Now who's the, which department are you in?
Uh Homestead.
Homestead, okay.
The exceptional department.
Okay. So do you know Steve back there?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I do. It's all just, um, oh, sorry, you don't know.
Okay, so, yes, I'm posing this, posing this item in rule. Okay, you'll hear from us Monday. Okay, sure. So, and we need to, let's see. I guess we'll see you on the decision board one day.
Um, yeah, I'll just, I think you emailed that.
Hearing from us.
Thank you.
And uh Steve, I guess we'll see you on our, whatever the decision is.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we haven't figured out yet if we're gonna meet uh for business personnel, they still are on there.
Yeah, they still have a couple more weeks to go for uh appeals on the business personnel stuff.
Okay. Okay, so now let's decide, what, what day are we meeting, are we meeting at all this week?
No, we'll meet Monday, so on Monday we'll do the excise and.
Yeah.
And decisions, but so if we have any new appeals that come in, then we'll do them after.
Didn't have any more, that should be it.
Done.
Yeah, that, the deadline is passed, the deadline was what, last Monday, that one? Yeah, so.
What, for notice from, from business personnel?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking more of the uh residential.
Oh no, we kind of figured we were it for.
Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're done with the real estate section.
Okay, but we'll see you.
First of all, it's the only thing that might still.
Yeah.
The date of next Monday is the thirtieth?
Yes.
And what, that's the day we have to get the excise out, because they have to have their budget.
And who was next, who is? Oh shit, no, you don't do that. You don't do access, you do, I'm doing, who, who, what's the school district?
There's several that are on.
Okay.
Also Cratchit with Hudson City.
Do you think they'll add more to the agenda people? Uh as far as I know, they shouldn't, but.
At what time will we meet Monday?
Uh we can meet at nine thirty, nine forty-five would be, we can keep it the same schedule, nine forty-five will be excise and then Boe at nine thirty.
Okay. Okay, anything further? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.